Welcome, everybody, to the January 31st, 2024 Commission Work Session. We'll call the meeting to order. At this time, I'd like to ask Commissioner Lauster, do the moment of silence of reflection, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Lauster. Next is review and approval agenda. We do have some stuff to move around. We want to move Item A to after Item D and move, which is the vocational rental ordinance, and move the Drainage Commission discussion up to A. Those would be the changes of the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Lauster.
Second.
Second by Ms. Hickok. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Jason, we're gonna talk about the Drainage Commission.
Morning Commissioners, Jason Thunison, Assistant Planning Director. So basically with the Drainage Commission, as you guys know, they did meet a few months ago. There was some discussion about whether they wanted to disband or not. At this point, staff is just seeking your guidance as to how you want to move forward with that Drainage Commission.
And we have Joe, who wants to talk about this also?
Correct.
Is there any questions, Ms. Hickok?
Well, it doesn't sound like a lot of interest from the other cities to move forward with this. I did talk with the Planning Director, Jason, Brittany and Jason about this and that we should move it forward, maybe and have it through Pennington County at this point, just because it's very important to Pennington County and something I believe we should keep because of that. Drainage is a huge issue for infrastructure in Pennington County. So anything we can do to move that forward and get Pennington County moving in that direction, I believe is a good positive way to move the Drainage Commission.
Thanks, Deb. Joe?
Yeah, I kind of echo what Deb said. You know, I was at the last Drainage Commission meeting and didn't sound like there's a lot of interest from Box Elder or City of Rapid City on continuing the joint jurisdiction. So I think it would behoove the county to do something, right? We have a lot of instances where other entities are draining on the county property and we need to have some sort of action or some sort of avenue to try and control that the best we can. You know, we've had several instances over the last five years that I've been here that development has put undue hardship on county residents just due to the drainage from the developments. So if we can have an avenue to help do, what's the word I'm looking for here? Help curb that and help, you know, have a solution going forward would be beneficial to the county. And from my understanding, at that point, if the county does take it over, and this is probably where State Street will have to jump in, but you know, there's an avenue for to collect some funds to maintain those drainages and start looking at some drainage studies to go from there, so.
So I think you guys did, Brittany and you guys did a very good job with the Drainage Commission as far as explaining the history and what was going on. They did a really good job of that. It's unfortunate we couldn't get some buy-in, but I tend to agree with Deb with, I think we need to move forward with it in some ways. I'm not sure if we need ordinance changes or makeups of the commission, but you know, that's the whole purpose of this meeting is to give some direction to look for, look into that and how we can do it.
I agree.
So I...
Ms. Alexa?
Alexa, I didn't know if you wanted to chime in on this because it might be your work.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Alexa Muller, Pennington County State's Attorney's Office. Like we talked about at the last planning workshop, there are a couple of options we can explore. I believe I iterated back then that the first step would be to dissolve the Joint Drainage Commission. I do have a draft agreement to dissolve the commission. I don't have it totally completed because I didn't know what we wanted to do until today, but I'll get that moving and then from there, there are options. The options, as Commissioner Hickok mentioned, is we could do a Pennington County Drainage Commission where the board themselves could appoint commissioners or the board itself could act as the Drainage Commission for the county. I can send out a memorandum that I've drafted to go over the pros and cons of those options as well.
Okay. I don't know if we need a motion for that, give you the direction to move forward with that.
I think we should make a motion that way. When people listen, they know where we're going.
What would you recommend for a motion to move forward?
I would recommend moving to direct the State's Attorney's Office to draft a dissolution agreement for the Joint Drainage Commission.
That'd be my motion.
Say again.
Moved by Hickok, seconded by Lauster. Any further discussion?
Thank you, Alexa.
Any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Arrow.
Mr. Drews, did you catch that?
I did not catch it, but I do have audio, I think, now.
Okay. What we just did was gave direction to Alexa, the State's Attorney's Office, to dissolve the Drainage Commission, but bring back options for creating a Pennington County one.
Mr. Chair, I'm having a difficulty. I'm hearing you.
What we just did was gave direction to the State's Attorney's Office to dissolve the Drainage Commission, the joint one.
Okay.
And come back with, once we do that, then come back with recommendations to how to set up the Pennington County Drainage Commission.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We have to do roll call or no?
Not anymore. That was, yeah. They changed, they changed that.
I thought they did, but I didn't remember if it was. Thank you.
So, Jason, now we're coming up to the ordinances. We've got quite a few. You got that, Gary? We're gonna go to ordinances now?
Okay.
That's Item Two. Okay. Go ahead, Jason.
So, staff, like you said, we do have quite a few ordinance amendments that we're proposing at this point. Purposes to amend Sections 208, 209, 210, 211, 12, 216, and 510 of the Pennington County zoning ordinance. Start off with Section 208.
Can't hear you, Jason.
Sorry. Starting off with Section 208. So we're looking to change the required current half-acre lot size minimum for low-density residential to one acre. There has been some concern by the Planning Commission and I believe this board as well about that half-acre lot size. For example, if somebody comes into rezone a two-and-a-half-acre parcel, that would allow them to further subdivide that down to half-acre lots, potentially having five lots. Staff just found that there was some conflict there. So with this change, it would more or less bridge that gap between suburban residential and rural residential, which was really the intent of it to begin with.
That was 208?
208, correct.
Chairman.
Ms. Hickok.
Will you vote on these today or are we just recommendations to bring forward?
Yeah, we're just kind of giving you the heads up of the direction that we're looking to go.
Thank you, Jason.
And Section 209 and 210 kind of go together. There are no material changes to either of those zoning sections. It's just more or less going to be a name change from suburban residential to suburban residential one. And urban residential would be changed from urban residential to suburban residential two. Kind of a negative connotation with urban residential zoning districts in the county. So we're looking to kind of clean that up a little bit. Also, it's...
Ms. Hickok.
So tell the difference between suburban one, Jason, if you would, so people know, and suburban two.
Sure. So suburban residential is the current zoning district right now. It allows down to a 6,500-square-foot lot size. I think the biggest difference is that in urban residential, it allows for multiple family dwellings in higher density.
Okay.
So we kind of ran into that out of Murphy Ranch in Apple Valley as well, so.
Mr. Chair.
Okay. So, Lauster.
So basically, the change is so that someone who says urban doesn't think it's only going to be sprawling country. They can understand that it's potentially going to have higher-density type of housing. Is that correct?
Sure. Yeah, it's not, like I said, it's not going to have any material change to the zoning ordinance. It's just more or less a name change. This does fall in line with standard planning practice as well. The SRD one and SRD two designations is what the city uses, which is where most of these properties are found within that three-mile plating jurisdiction of Rapid City. So it's going to be more or less consistent with them.
This is, sorry. Chairman, is the setback the same?
I'm sorry?
Stepback's the same.
Yes, everything will stay the same as in the whole, ladies.
Thank you.
Any further questions on those two? 211?
Section 211, we're looking to combine commercial district and highway service district just because the uses by right are so similar. The biggest change materially here would be to remove amusement structures from a use by right and make those conditional uses. There's been some concern by Jerome Harvey, our fire administrator, that there are inspections required for those sorts of pieces of equipment.
Still not close enough, huh? Speak up. Apparently.
Yeah, so Jerome Harvey had some concerns over those pieces of equipment and they should have inspection schedules. If we have them on a conditional use permit, they'll be reviewed to make sure that those inspections are happening.
Instead of automatically being approved for commercial, now they have to be a conditional use permit.
Highway service, correct. Yep. They were a use by right, so they didn't require any kind of conditional use permitting or oversight at that point. So I think that's a good change. Also, we're looking to, under this combined zoning district, to add storage units as a use by right. We do have a lot of conditional use permits that come in for those. Staff feels it's kind of unnecessary to make them go through the conditional use permit process for storage units. We don't have any problems or issues with those sorts of uses, so we would just propose to make those a use by right.
Okay.
Chairman.
Ms. Hickok.
The bottom line, you're not going to have highway service, you're going to call it commercial.
Correct.
Okay. And then that makes sense because a lot of the high, the major arterials in the highways, highway service sometimes was getting confusing because we knew it was commercial. So it just, it makes sense not to have the highway service. Most places too, they don't really have highway service, I don't think anymore. So it's a nice update. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Lauster.
Just a question. So whenever you change that, I'm seeing all the red lined, like barber beauty shops, bus, business schools, financial institutions. Why do y'all feel that those aren't used by right in the commercial area?
Those are more or less housekeeping and cleanup as far as those zoning districts go, like drive-in eating establishments. Those are things that should be used by right and are be able to be used. A lot of those were reworded into, like that one specifically, into drinking establishments, eating establishments, and drive-in establishment is more or less the same thing.
Okay.
Any further questions for Jason on those? Seeing none, we'll move on to 212.
212. We're looking to create a neighborhood commercial zoning district, something that would serve more or less a neighborhood on a lower-scale commercial uses, thinking along the lines of having size limits on those offices and structures to less than 2,000 square feet. Something along the lines of banks, salons, things like that, that would more or less serve that community directly. I think there's benefit added to having that zoning district.
Chairman.
Ms. Hickok.
I think this is a long time coming because a lot of the areas that we're trying to put neighborhood or some commercial in for services for neighborhood areas, this just works because we couldn't put it in there because of the zoning or it looked like spot zoning. So it makes a huge difference for those areas, especially when we're going out into like Rapid Valley and those areas that we really need to make a difference with some of this neighborhood commercial for people to run those 2,000-square-foot gross floor area for retail. Like, does that include strip malls and stuff, Jason?
Right, that would be the intent.
So it's, they're individual, so it's, okay. Thank you.
I'd use that for an example. Within Rapid City neighborhood, commercial would be circling us. It's that schedule, like on Fremont, that's an example.
Well, those, like mini-marts, different stuff like that, they're not called mini-marts anymore, but back in the day, those kind of things are really, or those kind of businesses are good for the areas. And then you can have, one thing, if I could ask a question again. So some of the grocery stores and things like that, that would have to be in commercial, right?
Right. Yeah, that would exceed the 2,000 square foot.
Be too big. Yeah, but, okay. Makes it, I mean, I already knew that, but I was just thinking those are some of the areas that in like Rapid Valley is where I'm thinking, I mean, it should be all over, but we don't have a lot of commercial and we're going more, excuse me, more and more east. So we need to think about putting some more commercial or like having Twilight Drive or that area into some more commercial for people if we're going to keep going out east. So there's a lot of neighborhoods out there and we're doing a lot of low-income housing in that area. So it's going to need to have some more services like this, so.
Joe?
Chair, Commissioner Drews is having a difficult time hearing on the other end, requesting that everybody purposefully speaks directly into the mics.
Thank you.
I think that's you, Jason.
Act like you're speaking to your kids, Jason.
See what I can do. Outside voice.
So right now, that was 212. Is there any more discussion on the neighborhood commercial?
Charlie's got one out there.
Oh, Charlie.
Charlie Johnson. My biggest concern on this one would be that when you have businesses that are licensed by other agencies, either state or federal or whatnot, the way it looks to me, they could still be here. Gun shops, liquor stores, smoking, that may not be something people want in a neighborhood commercial. I'm just saying, those discussions, once you get outside of the regulation of the county where that business also has a separate license, I think we should somehow name that or include that in our discussion on the neighborhood commercial. That's all.
Are you talking like beer licenses, like convenience store?
Yes.
On and off sale?
Well, and there's other things. We have marijuana legislation and whatnot moving around and medical-use marijuana. And there's some that are just not going to be comfortable in that, but they may apply to run a retail store in a small mall, if we're talking about small malls, to lower their overhead on their office size and where they're at because then they're not in a major place. I just think that the wording's got to be thought through pretty well.
Okay.
Right. And similar to any other zoning district, we do have uses that are allowed by right in that zoning district. Medical marijuana requires conditional use permit.
So you're going to do that, that'll be contingent upon, in other words, if you don't. I just, the way I read it, it just looks like an open door. I didn't realize you're going to include those as well.
It would be just like any other zoning district. So we'd have the uses by right, and if they're not a use by right, they'd be required to get a conditional use permit.
Thanks, Jason.
And it does say conditional use on here, Charlie. I didn't know if you knew that.
Any further questions on 212? Seeing none, we'll move on to 216.
All right. So 216, as you guys know, a couple of years ago, we did do away with the planned unit development zoning district. Staff just felt it wasn't being used in the appropriate way. At this point, we do see that there is a need to bring that back for mixed-use development. So that's what we're proposing at this point. There will be strict application to that, so it's not used for residential purposes only or used for spot zoning. It is a negotiated zoning district between you and the applicants. We don't want to see that coming down for residential use only like it had been used in the past just to get away from, you know, reduce setbacks or anything like that, so.
Chairman.
Good idea.
So PUD, planned unit development, are we, we're going to look into doing PCDs, which is a planned commercial? Or does that fall in there because you have mixed use with commercial, with residential?
That would be the intent under the PUD as we're proposing, yeah.
Right, because it's mixed uses and then they still have to do conditional uses, right? With PUDs?
They're...
Depending on what's in the PUD, right?
Yes. There could be, depending how many uses that they have that are outside of what's approved for the PUD, they may have to do a multiple use permit, and I'm going to get to that in a minute, too.
So do you know how many PUDs that we've had over the years? Do we have a lot, Jason?
There are quite a few out there. Like I said, though, they weren't being used in the appropriate way. So we do have three houses, three lots in a PUD for residential use. So the intent was for mixed-use, outside-of-the-box-thinking kind of developments, and that's not what it was being used for before. So that's what we're looking to get back to because we do feel that there is a need for it.
And I remember that because the PUD, that's why we ended up getting rid of it because we had everything PUD. You'd have two houses with some barber shop or something, and then we call it a PUD. And I agree. If we're gonna, I was in favor before of getting rid of them because we were PUD and everything instead of actually putting them in zonings that made sense. Or letting people just kind of willy-willy everything.
Exactly.
And it made kind of a mess. So I'm in agreement with this now, now that we need it for mixed use and you've kind of detailed some of the things that it's used for. And then also, have you changed a lot of your ordinances and your requirements for those PUDs? It's going to be huge. Thank you, Jason.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Ruskner.
So Jason, on a PUD, I understand the mixed use, you could have, you know, different types of commercial use, but you're saying absolutely no residential on that PUD?
No, that's not what I'm saying at all. Just, we wouldn't allow that to be approved for a PUD for strictly residential use to reduce setbacks or negotiate something else, some other requirements that would be more appropriate for residential zoning district, correct?
Thank you.
And thanks for bringing this forward. I mean, this is informational, so we can, we still have time to look into it some more if we have any more questions.
Yep, absolutely. There is one more change to 216 that we're proposing as well, and that's to remove planned unit development overlay districts. We have been using those for specialty resource, more or less multiple uses on a property, and we feel that's more appropriate to actually make it a multiple use permit and put that under Section 510, conditional use permits. It's just more appropriate that way, we feel.
Okay. So we kind of lived and learned on some of the changes we made in the past and we're going to come back and...
Right, just fine-tuning.
Yep. Is there any further questions for Jason on 216, planned unit development districts? Seeing none?
Okay, so moving on to Section 312. This is our sign section of the ordinance. What we're proposing is to include an update to that that would address the Supreme Court case Reed versus the town of Gilbert. That had to do with First Amendment issues, limiting the content of what can be on a sign, which more or less made our ordinance in the gray area of being legal. So this will bring this into compliance, more or less just limit us to regulating the time, location, and size of the sign, but absolutely nothing to do with the content of it.
Okay. So any questions for the Commissioners on signs, 312, Section 312? Seeing none, we'll move on to the repeal section of 318 for guest houses.
Yep. So just like you said, we're looking to get rid of the Section 318 for guest houses. The section of the zoning ordinance doesn't seem to be needed anymore since we have accessory dwelling units out there as an option for people to get a conditional use permit for. Guest houses were more restrictive to get, more restrictive in practice because they're limited to 180 days. No real mechanism to track that, and staff didn't feel that it was a viable option considering we have ADUs out there now, so.
So you're actually wanting to remove this because we have the ADUs now?
Absolutely.
Okay. Ms. Hickok.
This is another positive we guys move forward with. It's the future of basically development in areas. So bottom line is, this is something that's been a big change for a lot of different areas, not even counties, it's cities, so people can take care of their grandparents and some of their disabled family members. So I appreciate that. Been something good, like I said, I think the city's moving in or already has moved into doing some of these as well. So makes a huge difference for people for the future of taking care of their family members. So thank you, Jason, for not only doing, we had the guest house, but making accessories so we can make smart exceptions for people to use this ordinance in a way that's useful. Thank you.
And so with all these changes, I'm gathering consensus of agreeable with, with the Planning Department's recommendations.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Ruskner.
So Jason, there was a development guide published January 2023. So is that going to change and be updated to reflect this?
Yeah, once these ordinance amendments are approved, we'll go through and update that development guide and get that out to anybody who needs it.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. And I did have one more that's not on your agenda for Section 510. It's just kind of housekeeping, like I talked about, moving multiple use permits under Section 510 for conditional use permits.
Okay. Thanks for the presentation. I think we had some good questions from the Commissioners, so I think consensus is to move forward.
Okay. Great, thanks. Next item was a proposed comprehensive plan viewed as 2040 amendments. This would more or less just put into practice into the comprehensive plan what we're proposing under those zoning ordinance and make those relevant updates to the comprehensive plan. Housekeeping again.
More housekeeping. Any questions on the comprehensive plan proposal? I think they're agreeable on that, too, Jason.
One thing I, Chair...
Ms. Hickok.
One thing on the comp plan is with accessory dwellings and all the things that are coming out different, does that affect the comp plans for areas that we've already zoned or we have a comp plan already in place? Does that cause us a lot of issues or do we just do PUDs often?
Shouldn't because they're conditional use permits. They're more or less temporary in nature, so we wouldn't make any changes.
Well, what I'm seeing a lot of, Jason, is a lot of the rezones in the different areas that we're coming in a lot of since we've had the comp planned. Do we need to update or do anything with that comp plan if we're, when's the last time we updated it?
I think that was last approved and adopted in 2021. There have been multiple amendments to it with rezone and comprehensive plan amendments, that sort of situation, but as far as changing the verbiage that's in it right now.
Right.
I don't know that we need to do that at this point. It is on Brittany and I's agenda to get to, to go through and do a scrub of the comprehensive plan amendment because, or the comprehensive plan, because we don't feel like some of the zoning districts, especially on the Highway 44 corridor or zone or future land uses identified appropriately, I think there should probably be more commercial along that corridor.
Right.
Specifically as an example. There are other places throughout the county that we've noticed the comprehensive plan doesn't exactly line up with the vision of the future. So it is something that we're going to look at, probably not anytime in the very near future, but it's something that's definitely on our list of things to get to.
Well, because you're changing a lot of neighborhood commercial, you're doing some different stages of PUD.
Right.
It makes a huge difference, like I said, in Rapid Valley and the different areas that are getting a lot of development in there. It's time prior to look at some of that proposed comp plan and change some of that for Pennington County. Otherwise, like I said, you're going to all have houses all the way out.
True.
And people are going to think it's, there's no commercial, there's no neighborhood commercial. And all they have to do as developers is look at that comp plan and they're going to go, we ain't going to do it there because it's, we're going to have to rezone, we're going to have to do this step, we're going to have to do this step. So anything we can do to move some of that forward, Jason?
Okay.
And look at some of the areas that are really getting developed, of how we can change some commercial in it, neighborhood commercial, so those developers know that they can do some of that without having to go through 10, not 10, a couple of things. So just something to look at if we're trying to make a difference for... So, just something to look at if we're trying to make a difference for, um, development, uh, in the future and how it's developed, before it's too late, and then we're just all houses, so.
Sure.
Just something.
Appreciate, appreciate that direction, too, yeah, we'll take that and move out on it, so, once we do these comprehensive plan updates, then we'll make sure that those are included.
And again, like I said, Twilight and the different areas that we had visited about, major arterials or even minor arterials that can be turned into corridors for commercial, neighborhood commercial.
Sure.
All right, thank you.
Anything else, Jason?
Um, nope, I think, uh, the next thing is legislative updates from Alexa. Legislative updates from Alexa.
Yep, that's next. Item D, legislative updates. Alexa.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Um, Alexa Muller, Pennington County State's Attorney's Office, I'm here to give you a legislative update. Uh, there's not a whole ton going on in the world of planning and zoning in the legislature, but today actually is the last day for legislators to throw out all of their bills, all of their suggestions, anything that they could fill in later, um, home cops that turn it into whatever they want. Today is the last day for them to introduce that, so things could change even up until this evening. Um, there are a few that do relate to planning and zoning, the first is House Bill eleven zero five, which is to revise the compensation for an improvement district board member. Now, we don't have any improvement districts, county improvement districts, in Pennington County at this point, but this bill essentially raises their compensation from a hundred dollars to two hundred dollars. Pretty simple, again, this doesn't currently impact us, but it might, um, as it could impact counties. This also is currently tabled, um, there is no hearing date set for it, we don't know if this will come back up again. House Bill ten forty-three includes lithium in the definition of precious metal for purposes of the mineral severance tax. Uh, this actually just passed with an amendment in the Senate yesterday. Um, this also, it does exactly what the title says it does, it adds lithium to the definition of precious metal for the purposes of mineral severance tax. Um, I do have a copy of the bill, if the board would like to review it.
That'd be great. We can get copies made for all the commissioners.
And these are all published online at the South Dakota Legislative website, they keep very good track of how these things are amended and at which stages. Uh, the next bill that pertains to zoning is House Bill eleven twenty-eight, which is to require a zoning authority to determine that a well is an established well that has not been abandoned in making a permitting decision. Again, this bill does exactly what the title says it does. It did pass the House yesterday afternoon, and will cross over to the Senate. Um, again, I do have a copy of this bill, if the board would like to review it.
I'll give it to Joel. Very cool.
All pretty simple up until this point, which is House Bill eleven forty-nine, um, pretty hot topic, allow for a vacation home establishment and provide for municipal and county regulation thereof. Um, this one is a little bit more complicated. The proposed law reads this way. A new section be added to Chapter seven dash eighteen A. A county may not adopt or enforce an ordinance other than regulation that expressly or effectively prohibits the use of a property as a vacation home establishment, as defined under SDCL Section thirty-four eighteen one. A county may adopt or enforce an ordinance or other regulation that specifically regulates property as used as a vacation home establishment, only if the regulations provide requirements regarding, one, fire and building codes, two, health and sanitation, three, traffic control, four, solid or hazardous waste and pollution control, or five, the designation of an emergency contact for the property. This bill, um, was introduced, I believe, or dropped, as they say, last week. Um, it will be heard in the House Local Government Committee tomorrow morning, I will tune in, I believe that'll be at six forty-five, I'll tune in and provide updates as they come. Um, I believe this will be a fairly lengthy discussion in committee as this impacts not only counties, but other municipal governments, it impacts the integrity of the state of South Dakota. Um, again, I don't have any updates where this is at this point, because it will be heard tomorrow. The next bill that impacts planning is House Bill ten, excuse me, eleven fifty, which is to enable the exercise of control by local governments over the presence and operation of medical marijuana establishments within their jurisdiction. Um, again, pretty self-explanatory, and this will also be heard in House Local Government tomorrow morning. House Bill eleven ninety-four, which is to clarify provisions pertaining to tax increment finance districts. This is approximately nine pages of legislation that is essentially cleaning up, um, regulations regarding TIFs. It, again, will be heard in House Local Government tomorrow morning. Moving on to the other body, Senate Bill thirty-nine, prohibit a homeowners' association from placing restrictions on firearms or firearm ammunition. Uh, it does exactly what the bill claims it does, and this is actually heading to the governor's desk. Senate Bill one hundred eleven, an act to revise requirements for mining and mineral exploration. Again, this is a fairly hot topic, especially out here in West River, South Dakota. Um, this did get heard in the Senate Agricultural Committee yesterday, it passed six to one, it will be heading to the Senate floor, I do not have a date on when that will be calendared for the Senate. Um, as I hope is evident, I've been keeping a very close eye during the legislative session on bills that pertain to planning and zoning, um, to county governments, to state's attorney's office generally. Um, it's very early, the bodies have a lot of work left to do. The last day for any work to be done is March fourth, which, fun fact, is the only date that's also a command. Um, a lot can change before our next legislative update in the summer, but if there's anything that you'd like clarification on, or if there's a bill that you'd like me to track and keep you updated on, please just let me know, and I'm happy to do that.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskin.
Alexa, can you, if I understand this, House Bill eleven forty-nine, I think that was Trish that put that bill on the floor. I interpreted as they're trying to give the county less, say, in regulating vacation home rentals, if I understand that right.
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Roskin, that is correct, they are.
The one acre that we've been trying to, in density, that would pretty much, uh, be a moot deal if that pa- uh, bill passes as, uh, put together.
That's correct, it would limit what the county could regulate to five things, again, that's fire and building codes.
Okay.
Health and sanitation, traffic, waste, and emergency contacts.
And that's coming up tomorrow?
It will be heard tomorrow morning, yeah.
Okay. That'd be its first hearing.
Sorry?
First hearing.
Yes, it's first committee hearing.
So, any further questions for Alexa?
Thank you.
Thanks, Alexa.
You, Alexa.
Thank you.
I'm thinking Brittany got selected for jury duty.
Yes, sir, she texted me, uh, while I was up here earlier, and said that she's not going anywhere for a little while, so, we're gonna move on to vacation home rentals, if that's all right?
We can do that.
Cody's gonna take that for us.
Cody's gonna take it. Cody.
Uh, Cody Sacks, Senior Planner. Uh, so, the vacation rental ordinance, uh, this has been going on for, uh, a year and a half now, if more. Uh, it was recent, we recently proposed an ordinance, that was before the Planning Commission and the Board, uh, the Board denied the ordinance, uh, so we're looking for a little direction on where the Board wants us to move forward, if they want us to propose a different ordinance, or if they just wanna keep the ordinance that we have for three nineteen the same. Uh, so, staff, uh, kicked this around a little bit in the office, we took some, uh, comments that were made from the Board of Commissioners, from Planning Commission, from members of the public, uh, there was a lot of testimony on it. Um, so, the first thing would be, uh, doing a registration process, um, almost like a license, similar to like what we have for, uh, operating license for septic systems. Uh, that'd be a license that someone would have to get every three to five years, I believe, or leading closer to the five years, uh, mark on that. Uh, the license issued would be the operation for the vacation rental. Uh, the checklist would include, uh, a copy of the Department of Health Inspection, copies of the sales tax license, verification of onsite wastewater treatment system sizing, uh, that would include the TANR letter. Uh, the parking requirements, uh, currently for a single-family residence, it's two parking spots per dwelling, uh, something for a while in fire permit, if they have, um, if one is required. Uh, local contact information within fifty miles of the VHR, uh, operating license, uh, that would, I believe, we're proposing that the operating license would be, um, required more frequently than what our zoning ordinance requires now. And then, um, a registration renewal, uh, these would be, oh, sorry, uh, one thing that wasn't on the agenda that was added would be the overnight guest limit, which would be two person per bedroom plus four additional guests, um, if their septic system's sized properly, so if their system's sized for five bedrooms, they only have a three-bedroom house, someone could have bunk beds in a bedroom, uh, to increase occupancy. Uh, the VHR license would be non-transferable, uh, new registration would be required with new owners. Uh, we're looking at a fee, uh, that'd be somewhat reasonable, about a hundred to a hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, we are looking at prohibiting them in regulatory floodways, uh, however, uh, we go by best available information, so if someone came in with a floodplain development permit and showed that the structure was outside of the floodplain or above base flood elevation, and they were reasonably safe from flooding, uh, they could be allowed. Uh, we would allow them in accessory dwelling units, uh, just one, uh, per lot, uh, the main residence would have to be owner occupied or operated as a long-term rental. Uh, one thing that was a hot topic was the lot size, uh, so this proposal would have no lot size minimum, so the one acre would go away, and then a large penalty fee, uh, for not registering, uh, upwards of a thousand dollars.
Mr. Chair.
I'm gonna make one comment, I'm not gonna participate in the conversation on this topic, because I do have a vacation home rental, but I will facilitate the meeting, if the commission's okay with that, or I can turn it over to Mr. Roskin.
Mr. Chair, in light of what we just got, um, briefed by Alexa, it might be wise, while some of this stuff sounds better than what we had in the past, it might be wise to kind of sit on it and wait and see what the state legislature does, because no sense of having our staff work time and hours on something that may completely be obliterated based on the, the legislature, since we know they're working a bill, so, uh, this might just be something we table at this moment in time and, and deal with later.
Alexa, have any comment on that?
Alexa Muller, Pennington County State's Attorney's Office, I don't think it hurts to have discussions, um, particularly here in our planning workshop, as to what the commission would like to see as it relates to a vacation home rental ordinance. Um, the bill, as it's currently introduced, as Commissioner Roskin, um, discussed with me, is very limiting, but we don't know what could happen in the legislature. At hearing tomorrow, it could be sent to the forty-first day and killed immediately, we don't know until we know. It could be amended to the point where it allows the county to do anything they want to do, um, we really don't know, so I think, at this point, it does make some sense for us to have some conversations and see what the commission would like, so we can have something, um, waiting in the wings, depending on what the legislature does.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Haggard, are you done?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Ross.
I think one thing the county can do is stress to the general public that if they don't want these in their neighborhood, or if they wanna control the density, they'll have better luck, do, uh, looking at their homeowners' association and covenances, and I gave a perfect example of one, uh, to, to the commission, where they strictly did not want these in their neighborhood, and their covenant said commercial, that you can interpret that a hundred different ways, they went back, added one paragraph that said no nightly rentals, and I just, uh, think we need to let people know, they'll have better luck doing it in covenances and homeowners' association than, and putting, uh, in the laps of the commission.
Chairman.
Ms. Haggard.
So, we don't recognize covenants or homeowners' association, I do look and see every circumstance as it is, as a commissioner, but, um, to limit business, or, these aren't supposed to be a business, obviously, but, um, I look at every circumstance differently, so, um, you can put it in your covenants and your homeowners' association, and again, we don't recognize that as a county. Um, the other thing is, is, um, I believe it's, and the last one was overregulated, I think at this time, that's why, um, that bill got introduced, is becomes, because some of this is overregulated in the VHRs, when the long terms aren't regulated, anything like, uh, these vacation home rentals, and I agree with no lot size, cuz they, like I said, there's a million-dollar RVs that have been nicer than some of the, um, home rent, or the home, uh, businesses that have looked, and, and I've seen they've been pretty popular, so, again, we're doing accessory dwellings, we're doing some, some updating on a lot of their stuff in, in Pennington County, and, like I said, with this, uh, I don't know about the fee, uh, I talked with this with Jason and Brittany on the hundred to a hundred and fifty, I think if it's reasonable, they'll come in, hopefully, and register. Uh, the penalty, a thousand dollars, large penalty fee for not registering, I'd have to think about that, um, because they rent these, these VHRs for a lot of money, so a thousand, some people might just say, I'll just pay the thousand, because I made four thousand, five thousand off my, uh, rental a month, um, so, I'd have to think about that, but, again, I'm not into overregulation, but I also think, um, people should register, um, and be, uh, have good faith with the county in order to move these forward, and like I said, if you end up, um, overregulating, I don't think it's gonna make people come in, it's gonna make people not come in, because they have to comply to a certain extent, but they'll pay the fee before they will go and regulate or overregulate themselves, so, um, the other thing is, on complaint-based, we haven't had a lot of complaints in Pennington County on vacation home rentals, so, to make more regulations for them, um, doesn't make sense to me as well. So, I think a lot of this stuff that the, uh, Planning Department did, uh, makes sense, um, for moving forward on vacation home rentals, that's my opinion.
Thanks, Deb. Uh, Mr. Lester.
Alexa, maybe, maybe I should clarify a little bit, I, I understand, maybe we do wanna look at some things out there, and, you know, what's, you know, viable for Pennington County, but I guess maybe the next question I have is, um, if they say there's like five things currently in that bill, and I know everything can change, but let's say it stayed like that, would items three, four, five, and seven, are those even things that we would be able to, to regulate? And I'm kind of concerned with like prohibited and regulated, um, floodway, I mean, is it really saying that we wouldn't be able to regulate that in a floodway? I mean, I want, y'all threatened me to say I want less regulation on this, but we, we can't prohibit them from entering a floodway, based on the current law written statute?
So, Mr. Chair, the bill that's being introduced, um, it's very, very broad, um, the health and building codes, health and sanitation, you know.
Okay.
A reasonable mind could interpret, you know, the prohibited and regulated floodways to fall under that.
Gotcha.
Health and sanitation, but we don't know enough, it's, the bill as it's currently written and being introduced and discussed tomorrow morning is, is very broad, which I'm sure the committee will discuss tomorrow.
Okay, thank you for that.
Ms. Haggard.
So, in floodways, you're not gonna be able to build any wager, so.
Right.
Um, that's just a given, so prohibited in floodways is just, yeah, you're not gonna be able to put anything in a floodway. If it's hundred-year floodway, yes, but, or five hundred, but, uh, not the, um, regular flood hazard.
So, what, what I'm gathering, my consensus is what I've heard so far is you'd, I still want the staff to work on this as discussed, but we're waiting till after they know more from, uh, the vacation home bill eleven forty-nine, in order to really come up with some work, so I, what I gather is, is the commission still wants, wants them to work on this. Am I right, correct, with commissioners up here?
That's the way, that would be my suggestion.
Chair, I guess they're looking for direction, so.
Yeah.
Bottom line, do you have a problem with any of these things on here, is what they're asking, because they're trying to, uh, suffice, basically, the checklist, um, is the bottom line for most of it, but, um, are we going to have issues with the fees? If we bring the fees forward, are we gonna have problems with? If we bring the fees forward, are we gonna have problems with the lot size? They're asking this just in case it moves forward. What's your opinion?
So I'm gathering, so what I'm gathering is they want you to do a draft with some of those, what the fees were and bring it to the commission so they could amend, change, or what? Am I correct? That's what I'm gathering. But I do have a person online that wants to speak and an audience that probably has some comments.
I am wondering if, if that's me, Jeannie Bush?
Jeannie, yep, you're online. So I'll give you a chance to speak. You've heard the discussion so far from the other commissioners. You do have, you did send in a complaint and we'd like to hear your comments.
The one thing that, that I have tracked since way back in two thousand and six in our neighborhood is the, the additional traffic. And, and that is not addressed at all in most of your conversations. And way back in two thousand and six, we do have covenants against the vacation home rentals. We do not have a statement of no nightly use. That wasn't, that wasn't a thought in the nineteen eighties when our covenants were written. And we have consulted two lawyers, our neighborhood has, at two different times, and they have told us that it's a, it's a carrot. If we put that phrase in our, in our covenants, next it'll be another phrase that we should have used, and it just keeps going and going and going. But what's not addressed at all is on your checklist, it has the, the traffic, no significant change in traffic. And I documented that and presented it to the, the planning and zoning the, earlier this month. And the traffic changes with every single vacation home rental. And right now, we have three within six hundred and some change feet. That is a lot. And another one just went up for sale that will be within that same six hundred feet. So now we'll have four vacation home rentals out of fifteen, all within six hundred and some feet. And it does change the traffic. And it has, it's a huge detriment to our neighborhood. It's destroyed our neighborhood. We don't have the, the neighborhood that we had before the vacation home rentals. And so we asked planning and zoning, how can you help us? You represent us too. So how can you help us? And the traffic situation is huge. The transient population is huge. We have so many trespassers, trespassers on our property. We've had a lengthy conversation with the undersheriff, and he says, you don't really wanna suspend our money, your taxpayer money by enforcing trespassing, do you? Yeah? Um, yeah. So the, the, looking at how you regulate, it is mind-boggling to me. It's frustrating, but mostly, how can you help us that are in the middle of it? Because right now, we as landowners are screwed. If we are proponents of limiting the total number of vacation home rentals, our property now is very undesirable because it's surrounded by vacation home rentals. If we are proponents for allowing vacation home rentals, just no limits whatsoever, it's degrading our neighborhood and the, the amount of housing that's available for a starter home, an average home. It's, we are, right now, we as property owners are screwed. So that's what I want you to take into consideration is the, the traffic. When, when you, when that box is checked that there's no significant change in traffic, I can resubmit my photos that I took just of one short six-month period and show you what happens in our neighborhood that doesn't happen when you have a permanent, a permanent resident. Do you have questions?
No, the only thing is I didn't ask you to identify your full name before you spoke. If you could do that for me, please, for the record.
Sure. My name is Jeannie M. Bush, and I reside at two-two-five-four-one Deer Meadow Drive, Deadwood, South Dakota, and we are part of Pennington County.
Thank you, Jeannie. Is there any questions?
I think one of the problems, you know, you talk about traffic, you're talking about density. Because if, if there's a mechanism that we could sit there and say, you can, we're gonna be, you can have one of these within five hundred feet, that would control your traffic. But when you can have four of them within six hundred feet, you're gonna have more traffic. And that becomes a density issue, and I just don't know how we handle density. Last I understood, the density was regulated by the percent of the population in Pennington County, which five or six percent. With that being said, so theoretically, you could have all of these within one mile radius because you're still meeting that density limit. So it's, it's a mess, and I agree with you.
Any other?
And if you, if you look at the road plan, which I showed in, in our, in the January eighth meeting, if you just look at our, the way that our neighborhood is set up, we're not a block, we're a, we're, we're a planned neighborhood. And looking at that, there just, there is so little, it's a one-way gravel road going into the neighborhood, going out of the neighborhood, and it's not like you're a block where there's houses going around a block. Just looking at it, you, you can see that there, there will be potential problems all the time, especially when you get big rigs coming in with four to six U T Vs on the back of them. Just the assessment alone boggles my mind that you can check a box that says no significant change in traffic.
Thank you, Jeannie.
Chairman.
Ms. Hadcock.
So what are the lot sizes? You said there's twelve houses in your neighborhood, Ms. Jeannie?
There's fifteen.
Okay.
And the lot, the lot sizes, ours is three acres. One of the vacation homes is three acres, but it's, the face of the houses are, are the... If you could take a look at the map of our neighborhood, that would, that would explain it more.
So you have four vacation homes that are about three-acre lots?
No, they're not. They're, the, the lots run all the way from one acre to three acres to one, one person has... One person has two lots, so it's an empty lot, no, two, two people have empty lots next to them that they purchased so that nobody else could build. So it would make more sense to you if you had a map of your, of our neighborhood to see how it's laid out.
Mr. Chair.
Hadcock still has the floor.
So the, so the covenants, didn't you have covenants that said that they can, and you have four in there, in your neighborhood?
We have covenants, and the first, the first vacation home rental started in two thousand and six. He actually had a letter from Pennington County to cease and desist and still operated for more than five years. And then he finally did get a cup in two thousand and twelve. And yes, and his, the covenants, this is what the lawyer told us. The covenants on our, are listed on our deed to our property. And he said, that is what is the main factor here, that those, you often say you can't enforce, we have never asked you to enforce, we've always asked you to respect. And the lawyer that we have consulted, we've consulted two different lawyers, and he said with covenants that are attached to the deed, they should have been respected. But since he operated for five years, the, the letter to cease and desist, I have the number of the cease and desist letter from Pennington County, if that's of interest to you. I can, I can send you this information of the chronology of the vacation home rentals in our neighborhood in a PDF after, after this, if you would wish.
Okay, thank you. And then how, how many times a year are these rentals rented? Meaning, are they full all year, all four of them? So that traffic gets bad? Is it rented? Because I know from having vacation home rentals or, or just people having them, and I've rented vacation home rentals in different states, a lot of those aren't rented all year round, for one thing. And number two, they're not rented all the time. Sometimes you could have six weeks or even a couple months before they're rented. So even in the winter time here, I don't know if they're well rented, but one thing that just came to mind is you're in the Deadwood area, so that might be different. But do you know, basically, how many times a year that these are rented? Are they full all the time? I mean, what is, because you're, you're talking about traffic, Jeannie, so...
So the, the period that I documented was from May through October, and it is by no way a totally comprehensive. It is just that I walk my neighborhood frequently during the day. So the, and I'll correct you that it's three right now. We have a house that went up for sale within the same six hundred feet that will most definitely be approved for a cup too. I can't see why it wouldn't. But how often are they rented?
Yes, ma'am.
Most of the time, and I am, I am not at my home, usually November, December, we're with our kids in Minneapolis during the holidays. So that period of time, the neighbors would have to fill you in on that one. This winter, we have found that not as many people are there because there's no snow. And the snowmobiles are the, you know, it just changes vehicles, whatever is coming in. In the summer, it's huge A T Vs and dirt bikes and motorcycles, and in the winter, it's, it's snowmobiles.
I appreciate that. The other issue is, so you have neighbors that are selling their houses, and we talked about respect, but they're selling to people that are turning your neighborhood into a vacation home rental area. So that doesn't make sense to me that, okay, there, there's this issue with vacation home rentals, but these people are selling to people that are turning your neighborhood into vacation home rentals and starting a bigger fight with covenants, with, with lawyers, things like that. So I, I've seen it before where people are complaining, and then the next minute, those same people are selling their houses for vacation home rentals. So to me...
Excuse me, but, but I, I believe that the, the law, when you list your home for sale, you cannot discriminate on how the, how their intent to use the home is.
And, and I understand that, Jeannie, but they would, they should also respect and ask enough questions. Because I know if I had a house and I live next to Jeannie, and I've been her neighbor for twenty years, the last thing I wanna do is, and, and if that's been the complaint with you and your neighbor, and, and I find it all the time with different areas, is that the first thing they do is go, okay, I need to sell my house. It's not about my neighbor, it's not about, it's gonna be a vacation home rental. Like you said, you can't ask, but you can also understand that if I'm gonna sell my house to Travis, and I know, and I look up Travis, and he has vacation home rentals, or he has commercial businesses, or he has ten other rentals, I would probably look into Travis if I wanted to respect my neighbors and try to figure out or ask Travis, are you gonna have a vacation home rental there? So you're getting houses unfortunately selling from your own neighbors into vacation home rentals, which I think is sad and not respectful to, to what you guys are doing as well in your neighborhood to keep it, basically with no vacation home rentals.
I, I, I don't agree with your premise. I, I still think, and maybe the, if the lawyer is still in, in the room, maybe she can address it, but if a person offers the money that you've requested, if you think that their intent, which we didn't know that their intent was to do this, the first person that did it, he said, no, it was just gonna be his family vacation home, and that wasn't true. The people that just purchased the, the Hamel property, they said that they, they were going to do, this was gonna be where they would bring their family to, to grow their family and everything. They stood before you and said that that's what their plan was to do, but they needed the money now because they couldn't afford the house without doing that. And when, when they bought, they had a thousand dollar, no limit of if anybody put another bid in, they would up it by a thousand dollars with no limit. So, um, but again, I don't think it's the seller that has the, I don't think any seller can discriminate if a person offers the money that you've asked. I don't think you can discriminate by what you think their intent to do with the property is.
I, I, well, in one sense, Jeannie, you can't discriminate, but there's ways of not being able to sell. You can jack the price up to, if it was two, you can make four hundred thousand instead of two hundred, and then they're not gonna buy it, and you're gonna go to the next person. So there's a way to not discriminate and still keep your neighborhood or sell to people that you believe, like you said, are gonna be family orientated. But thank you for your comments today, Ms. Jeannie.
Yeah.
I am listening to you.
Next, I'll go to Mr. Ron Roskin.
So, Ms., yeah. So ma'am, I do believe I put a map together, and I categorized in a grid every landowner, when they bought the property, what they bought it for. And I'll send it to you. I'll just, I think I've got your address here. And, and the reason I did that is because one of the planning commission meetings, the majority of the landowners and Alpine Acres came here in opposition of a vacation home rental. And everybody's hands was tied, and then you had the majority of the neighborhoods there said, we don't want this thing, but it was approved. And if I was in charge, I would have denied it simply because the majority of the neighbors did not want that in their neighborhood. But unfortunately, we can't do that. And I wish there was some mechanism that we could sit there and listen to the people that don't want this, want these in their neighborhood. But unfortunately, if you look at the ordinance, there's nothing in there that gives us that latitude. But I know the neighborhood that you're at, and, you know, there's a lot of them in the Black Hills that are going through the same thing.
So just, just for review, staff, the planning staff brought back a separate ordinance, and on that, a revised one from the previous two. Cody, could you just repeat those for the record?
The, the, I'm sorry, Cody Sacks, senior planner, you want me to repeat the one through seven on this checklist?
I, I believe so for the record that way.
Um, so it'd be a registration process based off the checklist criteria. Every three to five years, license would be issued for the operate, or for the operation of the V H R. The checklist would include copies of the Department of Health inspections, copy of the sales tax license, verification of the onsite wastewater treatment system sizing, which includes the D A and R approval letter, the parking requirements, South Dakota wildland fire permits if one's required, local contact information within fifty miles of the V H R, and operating license for the registration renewal. Non-transferable, so new regis, new registration required for new owners, and the registration fee of a hundred to a hundred and fifty dollars. Prohibited and regulated floodways. Allowed in accessory dwelling units, limited to one, and the main residence would have to be owner occupied or operated as a long-term rental. rental, a no minimum lot size requirement and a large penalty fee for not registering, not registering.
And what, from what I gathered, there's some discussion on the penalty fees, but is, are, is the commission okay with staff's recommendations to work on to bring back?
Right.
So that, that's where I'm, I'm looking at you. I'm staying out of this, but if you guys are okay with what staff presented to move forward at a next meeting.
Chairman.
Ms. Haggard.
So what'll happen is it'll, it'll vet through the process and come up anyway. So the public will come in and.
Yeah.
And change or not change, um, what they've worked on, I think is good. Um, anything that we need to listen through, through the public for changes or otherwise, um, to see if this moves forward, um, that's the bottom line here today, so.
Any further comment from anybody in the audience? Charlie.
Charlie Johnson. There's a couple of new things come up and I was going to correct around what the basis of the percentage in the proposed draft ordinance that didn't pass was based upon a quarterly report from the feds on, uh, single-family dwellings is what it was based on in Pennington County. And that was selected because the alternatives to it, the one that would have been the most accurate was an app that was extremely expensive as well as we did not have the computer capacity to run that app. So we would have had to do additional spending, uh, to carry the app that would have been on a, almost a day-to-day basis. Committee reviewed that.
Sorry, Charlie, can I stop for a second? What are you talking about, Charlie?
I was talking about the comment Ron made that it was based on population. It's not on population, it's single-family dwellings in Pennington County.
For?
Incorporated and unincorporated areas. The draft ordinance that came forward to you folks. I just wanted to correct that. It wasn't on population, the density number. Cause I'm going to comment about the density number.
Okay.
Um, second thing was this, this new ordinance. I think you gotta take a hard look at where it's coming from and ask yourself whether you're walking into an ambush a little bit on the fact that you're asking the state come in here and tell you, and we have planning and zoning and had it for 40 years, that they're upending some of your, uh, options under normal planning and zoning, when in fact, they don't, they're not going to come in here and enforce and do these things. They don't now. They don't come out and look and make sure the people keep the fire extinguishers there. Our personnel do from the company and do these different things. So take a hard look at that, even as it moves forward. I think you've got to review that as commissioners. And I thank you for coming, giving me an opportunity to talk about the issue because I've got a pretty long history in it right now. But one of the things that I look at that you guys do, and I have all the respect in the world for your positions, you guys are probably the most maligned public officials here other than the school board, thank goodness, in, in the local area. And you've got to review these things and have done an excellent job in the past with very limited resources. And I think the committee you put together looked at that very strongly. You had, uh, operators on it. You had people opposed to it. You had people neutral. You had someone from the city that was involved and the city doesn't even supposedly have vacation home rentals. So I just want to thank you for some of that. And when I say limited resources, I'm talking about the amount of, of a, of a budget. Everybody thinks taxpayers send all this money to you guys to dial out where you want to put it. When, if they sat and thought about it, the percentage you control without mandates is very limited and you do a wonderful job with what you do. But let me talk about a couple of things from the draft ordinance, because I think you missed the mark when you let that go. This committee was the best of the three I served on. Absolutely dug they, when you, uh, Commissioner Haggard, when they talk about the public, we had a lot of public come in. The planning commission had a lot of public come in. In fact, some of those people are down in peer involved in this very, uh, legislation that's going through because they came back and talked to us about that. But you've got to look at this density thing. I think it's controversial. I don't think we have a situation where, where that's in the ordinance that you did not decide to go forward with, the draft ordinance. I'd get it out of it. It just isn't going to work. We're going to end up in a situation where we misapply it inadvertently, not on purpose. Somebody's going to challenge it. I just think it's got to be out of there. Second, there was one item in there that was extremely important, the license number or permit number, whichever you want to call it. That was a basis. They included it in all advertising that was to be done when you're on the, the internet and all these places they advertise. That license number would have had to been there. Then we know whether it's a permitted or unpermitted operation. That helps our staff, that helps the neighbor that doesn't feel the operation is do, is treating them fair as a property owner and, and infringing on their rights. But those lists with that number, so that number's available and those people could read it, takes away from a lot of extra people you need for enforcement. It's a very important number and that your committee put it in there. It's got to be required to be posted in their advertising. That's the important thing. Third, this, the special use permit, and that was, I believe, the basis where you came up with your committee in the first place to review, um, the new state requirements. It's what was about two-year-old program Travis was when they brought it up. It wasn't very long versus our conditional use permit. I think that if we can get that, the staff time saved and the ability to treat those people that have the right to have a vacation home rental and are willing to go down the checklist, I think it's an excellent idea. Just the staff savings is going to be in dollars and cents to the county and all the citizens. And fourth, Pennington County either, uh, has planning and zoning or they don't. And we've got it and what, we've had it longer than 40 years. This is a planning and zoning issue because I don't know of a better system that's going to allow for the people to use their property as is defined under the planning and zoning versus infringements on the neighbor from the use of that or vice versa. I just don't know of a better system. And we have a significant difference in position than the ether side of the state. Black Hills is a very different situation when it comes to these vacation home rentals. And the last thing I wanted to get into was, we talk about permits, use, uh, Mrs. Bush brought it up there. The committee reviewed almost every meeting we went through, how many current, uh, advertisements that were out there for vacation home rentals. You could look at every month through the year and there's somewhere, the average would be a thousand to 1,100 vacation home rentals are operating in Pennington County. Of those, about 600 operate in Pen, in, uh, incorporated areas, of which the vast majority are in Rapid City. And as I understand it, Rapid City still does not have or has, uh, established an ordinance that regulates or talks about it. They just don't have them. Well, they have five to 600 of them. We have the remaining 400, of which we have about 110 that are permitted. I think you've got to look at that, that difference and quit listening to the people that tell you they're going to look the other way on what you write as an ordinance. You've got to control these things for the right of both property owners, not just the one, but so that they have a basis. And if you have a special use permit where that person can get dogged down a checklist, meet the state requirements, which it just shows, uh, what's the name of the document that they get from the state with all their check? I couldn't remember that. Yes, Department of Health. We picked that up. We take that. We certainly recognize the state's work and what they want to do. So we're the ones that follow up on these things. You had the appointed committee. They worked hard, let alone the planning commission and ours that's in it. I just really think you missed the mark on it. I think that's where the review needs to be done. Most of the things we have listed up here today that the, uh, planning departments are looking at, they're right from that. They were work that was done with that. But it's already there. If you take the density out of what was submitted to you, it's not a bad thing. And I don't think committees, planning departments or planning commissions ought to be proposing fees. I think that's in your ballpark. So that's where I'm at. The fees may be a critical thing to some of these people, but it was brought up in these committees again and again, that that fee for not agreeing to get a permit or a license was nowhere near what we have it now. It's nowhere near what one day's rent is on these places. So, thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. Any further comments from the commission?
Chairman.
Ms. Haggard.
I appreciated the committee, but it's also a recommending body for us to look at everything they talked about. And also if you look at what the planning department proposed, it wasn't because, um, we told them what to do at this point. This is their proposal and they're thinking a lot on the same line. Government's here for oversight. It's not for control. We do not control businesses. We do not control long-term rentals. Um, we are, we are here to oversight or regulate to a point where it's health, safety and welfare. So I remember back in the day, um, it was long-term rentals having the same issue as these vacation home rentals. People didn't want those kind of people in their neighborhood. They didn't want all the traffic. They didn't want all the, um, different things that came with long-term rentals. Cause their whole neighborhood was turning into long-term rentals and ruining their neighborhood. So the same complaints that I'm listening to from vacation home rentals back in the day, it was the same kind of stuff from people. Same complaints, same things. Um, we don't want our whole neighborhood to turn into a long, or a rentals. We want this to be our neighborhood. We want people not to be able to sell those houses to, to people that wanted to, um, put long-term rentals in them. So the same complaints that I hear from the, the vacation home rental is the same with the long-term rentals. Since I've been in politics, what, 16 years? So they wanted government to come in and tell people there could only be a certain amount in your neighborhood. There can only be, you know, you know what that traffic's causing, you know, what they're parking on the street, they are doing this, they are doing that. Um, same thing. But again, I respect what the committee did, but I also understand that we are here for oversight, not control. So, um, I like what has proposed for the planning, um, and, uh, they're getting the point. We're not for here for overregulation. We are here to do what we would do with anybody's ordinance and their properties, their business or commercial, even though they say it's not. So a lot of people in the neighborhoods think they are. So, um, again, what people sell their property and what they do with their property shouldn't be regulated by government. It should be health, safety and welfare. So, um, those are my comments. And again, I'm not against vacation home rentals. I'm not against long-term rentals. I'm against people that if they're doing the wrong thing, you have CUPs. They're called conditional use permits. If that long-term rental Travis, you're going to be the pick on today. If Travis's long-term rental is not complying with health, safety and welfare, shut it down. Shut that CUP down. Or if people aren't, um, registering or doing what they supposed to, don't give them it. You know, if you don't want a license and you don't want to follow our rules and regulations, don't give them a, don't give them a vacation home rental. That makes sense. Um, we've done that at the planning commission. People didn't register. They just came in later and said, okay, we've been doing this over a year. What are you going to do? Well, we took the license away, didn't we? So again, they have to comply with anybody else. So if they're not complying based on, um, health, safety and welfare, you'd be surprised how many people you might shut down. But at this point, the complaints are not enough to overregulate or add more to it. So if it was, then it's time to do something different. So that's why I came up with the conclusion I did is just from listening to the planning department and where they're going. And, um, I like what they came up with, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Haggard.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskin.
Here's my two cents. If you need a sales tax license, you should be categorized as commercial. I think this is where it gets all complicated.
Okay, so you guys heard what I heard, so you know what direction you want to go with this.
Mr. Chair, there was someone in the back of the audience raising their hand.
So, no, Charlie, before you get back up, can I get this? Are you okay with that? Okay, go ahead, Charlie.
Charlie Johnson. In the ordinance that didn't make it, the proposed draft, that's exactly what the committee did. They puts the special use permit people, those that didn't have any problems and could go right through clerically versus those that went a CUP that did have questions and whatnot, so that we didn't get down the road separating. The way we have it right now, we're adding a lot more time because we go through every one of them as a CUP.
Thanks, Charlie. Just need to recognize yourself for the record.
My name's Jessie Drury and I'm here representing the South Dakota Short-Term Rental Association.
Okay.
Um, a couple of things that we wanted to touch on were, uh, Ms. Bush talked about how it was destroying her neighborhood to have, uh, short-term rentals there, vacation rentals. Um, it's been proven time and time again that vacation rentals improve neighborhoods. People don't want to stay at dumpy places. So typically the properties that are used as vacation home rentals are improved on. Um, just quickly looking up her house, her house was assessed at over $400,000. I don't know if those are, are affordable housing that we're talking about or making a stance against. Um, as far as the bill 1149 that was entered into the House Committee, we have this morning gotten a clause from the Department of Health to add in to that bill, uh, a Department of Health clause as well. Um, we are concerned as an association about our property rights. So things like passing ordinances or allow bans or limits on our properties is a little concerning to us. I've used my primary property as a vacation home rental for four years, I believe. Um, so things like that are a little concerning. We do pay a lot of taxes for vacation home rentals, um, besides non-owner occupied taxes. If we are not using our primary property, we are paying a sales tax. That's, uh, directly paid to, uh, the state every month by VRBO, Airbnb. Um, so the part of our association is to work with the cities and the counties to get rules and regulations that work for everybody because we know what works in one city or county doesn't always work in all of them. Um, we're just a little concerned about the property rights issue. Um, as far as depreciating, depreciating neighborhoods, I don't know if that's a great stance. We have long-term rentals. I would say that our long-term rentals are possibly where our affordable housing is being eaten up. So we are forming groundwork as the association for things that people need to do to have and run short-term rentals as well as standards that we as an industry want to see across the board. So we're trying to do that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Chairman.
Ms. Haggard.
Ms. Drury. So you represent who today, Ms. Drury?
The South Dakota Short-Term Rental Association.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. I think staff knows where to go on this. And so that brings us up to item F, the Hard Rock Mining Ordinance Update. The update's going to begin to the February 6th, 2020. The update's gonna begin to the February 6, 2024 Board Meet.
Right, and that would be staff's update at this point. It is a standing agenda item on, for monthly meetings. It is heard at the first Board of Commissioners meeting of every month. State's attorney does give an update on that, so at this point, any and all updates regarding hard rock mining would be given at those meetings.
And you guys are still working on the flow chart from Alexa and so forth, so it's still in work. I do notice, is there anybody who has a comment on this before we move on?
On hard rock?
Yeah.
Chairman, could we have Quinn come up and talk about some of the legislation on lithium?
She can say no.
He knows a lot about the hard rock stuff, and I'd like to know some of what's going on with the lithium and if our county's gonna be affected by it.
I'd, I'd be happy to, Commissioner Hagcock, and it's not anything too extensive out there.
Identify yourself, Quinn.
Quinn F. with the South Dakota Mineral Industries Association. Regarding lithium, that strictly pertains to just taxation. And so right now, the state has two chapters of mineral taxation, and so that's energy minerals and precious metals. So last year, it didn't fit under energy minerals tax, so they put it under precious metals this year. And right now, that's a 5% tax on any, I guess, product that was severed from a mining operation. So that, that was at 10%, which was, would have been one of the highest taxes in the United States, so they brought that down to 5%. But as far as anything else, the bonding requirements, that's just raising everything on mine licenses, mine permits, exploration permits, and that's something we supported, so.
So Chairman.
Ms. Hagcock.
So on lithium, how many lithium mines do we have?
Zero.
Okay. And how do they mine lithium?
That's through pegmatite rocks, which is regulated under the sand and gravel ordinance with the state and county.
Okay, and we don't have any processing plants, so they dig it up basically like they would any other aggregate? And then where's the processing plant?
Well, right now, we have one company that's exploring on private land down by Custer. There's a lot of claims and things like that, but just one active drilling company. There are other exploration permits out there. One would be a couple miles from where I live in Keystone, but they haven't, raising money right now. Lithium prices are actually down about 80% right now, so that's an issue of companies raising money to explore even, so.
So basically, you dig it out of the earth, right? Does it, when you're digging it, does lithium poison the water sources? Does it, what does lithium do?
We were out in peer explaining this. We actually had pegmatite rocks, which we're all very familiar with, have a lot of different minerals in them, mica, feldspar, things like that. So right now, if anyone was actually to move forward with any mining of lithium or mining of pegmatites, they would be looking at the spodumene mineral, which contains lithium, and just concentrating that, and then shipping that to a processing facility, which is a big difference from any gold processing facility we've, we've seen or maybe used to. We have two in the entire United States. One's in Nevada, and then the other one's in North Carolina, so likely that, that, that was kinda where the tax came up. If they were to ship a spodumene concentrate, that would be taxed under the severance tax, and then it goes to a processing facility out of state, so.
So maybe just a question for you. So why are they putting a 5% tax? Is other aggregates taxed at 5%? 1%?
So sand and gravel examples taxed at sales tax, four and a half percent if we buy a load of gravel. But because this is going out of state to a processing facility, the severance tax would apply, just, because sales tax wouldn't apply if it went out of state.
Right. So do you have a severance tax on anything else? Is it gold and silver? So they're making it more of a hard rock?
Like I said, there's only two options right now for them to tax under, doesn't fit under energy minerals.
So they picked one?
Yeah.
And we don't, I guess I, I'm not getting it then, if it's, if it's not like gold and silver, and they need to do a severance tax because it, it, basically, it's not poisoning the water, it's not doing anything, can, that, what's the bottom line, or do you know?
I think the, the issue obviously, as you guys are aware of, lithium being a hot topic in the county, so getting a tax on it is something they wanna get ahead of any mining, I guess is how I can explain it. But we also, as an association, support counties receiving some revenues from these taxes, so that's something we're working with legislators on, maybe next year to, to make sure counties are getting revenues from any potential operations.
So why is a hot topic on an aggregate because such, became such a concern?
Lithium's the hot commodity today, so next, next year it could be a different mineral, so.
Is there any other minerals that they can tax besides lithium that would come forward just because it got popular?
Oh, they, yeah, that's something we're working with legislators on to make sure we don't come back every year on a new mineral and have a discussion on what should be taxed or not be taxed, so. Idaho, for example, has a 1% catch-all mineral tax.
It's kinda like I was talking about, we need oversight, and I understand there should be some taxes and anything that can help the counties, we understand, so they're gonna push that. Is it state or county where their, that 5% goes into, and where's that money go?
So right now, under the precious metal severance tax, it's 20% goes to counties, but it's been, it's capped at a million dollars. So for example, Lawrence County actually hasn't received any money since 1994, because that cap is, it's not an annual cap, it's once they hit a million dollars that stopped. And so that's something that concerns us, and we'll work with counties and folks out in the state to try to get that fixed maybe next year, so.
Is there any other hard rock things we need to be concerned about, or something this county needs to look at that we're missing, that the state is bringing forward? I know Alexa did a, a great job, but...
No, she covered pretty much the two big ones, was bonding and taxation, so.
Okay, just wondering if we're gonna be affected by anything besides lithium?
I think it's a good opportunity for, I'm not gonna say it's a guaranteed revenue stream, but it's a good revenue stream that could potentially counties could use for a lot of, well, you guys know, could use some extra money in the counties, so.
Thanks, Quinn.
Thank you for that update. It's, it's nice to hear some of that, because some of it, you know, you reiterate, and you remember, and some of it, you can't remember all that, so appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Quinn. Is there any other items for consideration? Jason.
We don't have anything specifically under this category, but if you guys have anything that you would like to suggest we move out on that wasn't talked about today?
Jason, do we have anything to discuss? We had a meeting with the home builders that might be coming forward that maybe you wanna share, or are you still working on some of that?
We are still working on some of that. We did get some feedback from the Home Builders Association, mostly regarding the, a difference in the fees that we're charging for finished space for basements. So we're taking that into consideration. We'll definitely make some ordinance amendments to that based on their feedback, and that'll be in front of you probably sooner rather than later.
Okay.
I appreciate that. With, Travis and I met with some of the home builders, with Brittany and TJ and Jason, and we're also gonna have a installer for Septic meeting on Thursday morning as well, just to get some of their feedback on that. So thank you and your department for taking the time for the home builders and just installers and to school me and Travis up again on some of that stuff that's happening. We had a good productive meeting. It was a little contentious for a little bit, but got some things done with the home builders that makes sense, not only for building, but also for the Planning Department moving forward. So thank you for your time for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Saying none, that brings us up to item number six. These is items from the public. I'll just read what this is. This is a speaker request form is required. This is a time that members from the public can discuss or express concern to the Board and Commissioners on policy and issues affecting county government and its function. Action will not be taken during this item on any issue brought forth, not properly noticed. Speaker, under this items will be recorded in the minutes by the name and area of interest. Do we, and I have no speaker request forms on this. Do we have any speakers? Saying none, that brings us up to the end of our agenda item. I'd look to the commission.
Item to adjourn.
Second.
Moved by Hagcock, seconded by Laster to adjourn. All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, folks.